Okay, where we're started. Oh, you hear that?
Yeah.
The session tonight is being recorded. Our session is being recorded, is open to the public. The meeting is being broadcast via our Zoom teleconference. Public comments, um, are 30 minutes for agenda items. The board shall live in this room for a comment for each agenda item. 20 minutes for consent and for president. Increase for you to about that. Make public comment on our Sunday. There are forms over there through the door to go to this spot. Email public comments are sent to the students on the end at 24 hours following the board meeting. They'll be posted on the website with the agenda we've not received. We bring comments for tonight. Public comment is limited to 450 words and writing. More vote connectivity. Each motion will be followed by a roll call vote for action items. Should a board member attend the meeting remotely and lose connectivity by teleconference or phone, the meeting will be delayed by five minutes. We do not have any trustee boys not here with us tonight. She's not on the phone. Regular board meetings will be adjourned by 10:30. All of this special meeting, so.
And I'll make your.
Will go through the item 232.508. Public hearing and board review of the all joint union elementary school for 2425. Okay, so Colleen and I are Director of Educational Services. We're working very, very hard at TES. It's a group approach, definitely as a cabinet. There's different components of the LCAP that we all take responsibility for in the unit. And we want to make note that she is the, pretty much the head of this. She attends all of the SCOE meetings at the county level to make sure we're in compliance. And ultimately, she's the final reviewer of this.
Should I share?
A lead initiative on getting the LCAP done. So, great job, Colleen. We'll share with you what we have and bring it back to you now for action.
Thank you, Lois. So, as we've been discussing, that we are getting ready to develop a new LCAP cycle. And so what we have been first is feedback. This was feedback that we had enlisted from our community members. I mean, we have those contact items were posted on our website. As you can see in your form packet, 2425 LCAP feedback. We had about 23 individuals that responded to the five questions. We're quite pleased with, um, you know, the community members taking the initiative to read what we were posing and had some valuable suggestions. The five questions, so we asked, what is key to supporting student engagement and academic growth? What is key to supporting staff growth and motivation? What is key to improving student attendance? A key to improving student safety and improving safety at school? And then any other ideas or feedback? And so, um, you know, I'll kind of just provide a brief summary. In terms of their first question, what was really coming through with recommendations was the prioritizing the relationship between the students and the staff. Continuing our work on attendance, communicating with families around the importance of attendance. Quite a few comments and feedbacks around engaging in relevant curriculum. Less online types of software, but more hands-on and outside of the classroom type of learning. Really looking at student interest to guide the learning and curriculum. In the area of supporting staff growth and motivation, majority of the feedback came around providing staff opportunities to develop their, uh, providing professional development to staff in their areas of need versus to stay cookie cutter professional development. Continued professional development around social emotional learning. Inspiring growth mindset and then professional development around more inclusive. Key to improving student attendance. More opportunities for those field trips, school events, activities, those things that really are exciting and fun. Again, that relationship developing a school culture of belonging and trust. Communication with family is really the importance of core attendance and kind of what all the long-term needs. I mean, engaging classrooms that do facilitate collaborative learning environment opportunities of the working environments, um, the only good. And good parents. So, the key to improving safety at school, stronger consequences and disciplines. Positive behavior interventions and supports. Uh, school resource officer banning. More yard supervisors, having parents more involved. And really kind of having a public service announcements around, um, on how kids can be safe. Uh, additional feedback, um, that was provided, that was related to these questions. And there was some mention of having teachers be providing professional development on more inclusive practices, working with students with disabilities, having our students with disabilities pushed out more. Making sure that again, there's more hands-on and direct instruction versus our online software programs that are being devised. And so these are kind of just general themes that were, even though each of these questions are about 20, I think they were repeated, um, you know, on the. Was there anything that jumped out or any feedback? A lot of this, I felt like we could resume out this whole feedback sessions. Was there anything that would be different? Well, we'll have Alejandra review the budget overview for parents.
So, um, in order to build LCAP, I'm going to raise the funding part of it. So here is the budget overview for parents. We've created a simple, simpler method for this time. They're allocated at a LCAP time funding for the LCAP and how we break that. For our full funding, as you can see, for LCAP, that was about 40 million dollars. Of that, about 36 million dollars is dedicated for the LCAP. And besides the 36 million dollars, about 6.1 million dollars is allocated for high needs, like supplemental concentration. That, that's for foster youth, English learners and home income students. And we just have to identify that in our LCAP. Um, and, and show that we're providing those additional services for those students. Um, if we look at the funding changes to show which, what are comparable, we're going, what kind of expenditures of 15 million dollars? You'll see that in our budget presentation after. Of the 16 million dollars, like I mentioned, 36 million dollars is budgeted in our LCAP. And then breaking down for, for more specific into our third page. For the high needs students to increase and improve services. And so for the LCAP, we're supposed to be budgeting 6.3 million dollars, but we actually have budgeted 6.4 million dollars, a little bit more over the amount required, um, based on the needs and services our students.
So, first, um, I'm. In order to know what we need to update, um, we are required to provide an annual update for this year's LCAP. And this year it is unique in the sense that the update is a separate document. Moving forward, it will be embedded into the LCAP. So, the, uh, the annual update starts on page one. And a majority of these metrics and outcomes, we, we have already shared. We share these, these data sets as they become available. These are our dashboard data, our local reading assessments, our map assessments. The only thing addition, uh, new for this time around is really our preschool dual language, um, benchmarks that came out this spring. And we only report them every spring. So, those are the newer data sets. And so, um, kind of moving from page seven on all of these, these are the, just the metrics, these are what we're measuring. And so these are the data sets we're measuring. So, all of this, we've already shared, except our dashboard data in terms of our map and in terms of course. Scores, our participation rate for students on the key or English learner progress. Our summer programs that we put in place last year. Any misassignments with teachers, um, that wasn't identified, we didn't have any. Let's see, and then parents of unduplicated students being represented at stakeholder meetings. And then LCAP schools survey parent participation. So, all of this data has already been shared. Um, so as a part of the analysis of reviewing for this year. We are required to, um, kind of take a look at, were there any expenditures that we had budgeted for, but then we ended up spending more? And that's kind of outlined here, um, under the goal analysis on page 16. And we had, uh, four action items that we did end up spending more than we had a budgeted for. And you kind of explain why, some of it was salaries, some of it was when we originally allocated for the funds, for like the technology, we only allocated for Chromebooks, but then there were other added expenses that needed to be addressed. So, this helps to kind of explain, well, why did you spend more than you actually budgeted for? In addition, uh, to, uh, as part of this annual review. The, uh, the state does require us to look at all of our action items and then identify, were they effective or not effective? With the goal being if there are ineffective actions and then you would not carry them on. And so kind of just a really high overview. All of our action items that we had put into place for this year were effective in meeting, um, kind of our goals. And I, I went into a little bit more detail about each action item, what it was aligned to, what were the outcomes? There's some data that we had. So, after we've looked at all the action items, we then have to make some decisions around which action items are we keeping, which action items are we rewording or we clarifying? So then, um, you'll see on page 19, um, all of the action items that were either, if there was an action item, we deleted or we reworded or changed the, uh, the benchmark. That has to all be identified in, in the review as well. So, that's on page 19. And so anytime you change a number for an action item, it has to be identified sometimes. So, if we have, that's goal one. Any specific questions? So then we did the same thing, goal two. So, we have, first we have our metrics and these were again reviewed at various, uh, board meetings. Wasn't anything new that was added here. Survey results before in last board meeting. We did the same review, um, looked at, you know, were there any additional expenditures that we didn't budget for in, in goal two that wasn't in? We then reviewed all the action items and were they effective or not effective? And all of them were. And then, uh, we did make some updates to the actions for this by goal. And that's kind of outlined on page 31. Left goal two. And so now we get to our plan. So, taking all of that information, the plan summary does start out with some general information about the district, our demographics. And then, um, we dive into the annual performance reflections. A lot of this information was also in the annual update. So, there is some, um, repeating of the benchmarks that we were working towards. So, here we look at all of our dashboard data, our local reading assessment data, our, um, map data. So, all of the data that we reviewed in the annual really does, um, lay the foundation of what we were planning to do for the following year. So, it's all in here. This has all been shared before. So, a couple of pages, five. I did want to just kind of, you know, highlight it on page seven. You know, we have all of these action items that do address our metrics, but sometimes just feedback from what's, what, what is actually happening in the classrooms that have contributed to the success. Based on reflections that our administrators and our teachers did. I pulled out some key, um, key takeaways. Things that, uh, teachers or administrators, uh, identified was the plan to study act cycles that we're currently doing this at PDSAs, these are continuous improvement cycles. That definitely helped, um, classroom teachers to, uh, target and identify, um, specific benchmarks. That was noted as, uh, a tool. Tech tools such as Map Accelerator was identified and have other supplemental tools that do help, uh, and reinforce skills that are being taught, like Xern or Great Minds or Sback. They provide some reinforcement of some skills. Our after-school tutoring blocks that we did with the acceleration. And then, uh, PLC collaboration time. So, these are things that teachers brought, um, when they were reflecting on their, on their data, what they identified as helping to contribute to the success. Uh, some challenges, um, while attendance has improved, it did still continue to be a barrier. And then also some social emotional needs were interfering. On page eight, something that is new in this cycle. Districts are required to identify, uh, schools and/or, um, student groups that do receive red on their dashboard indicators. And so, uh, that is identified on page eight. And so those would be items that we would need to make sure that are addressed in either metrics or actions. And so they're all, uh, addressed here. Now suspensions were, you know, were in the red. And then, um, we have students, some student groups that were in the red for some, uh, for academics and, um, suspensions as well. Right, on page 11. As a part of this process, uh, we are required to engage our educational partners. And so, um, we have outlined all the partners that we have, um, had feedback sessions with. We meet monthly with our district advisory committee. And this is comprised of administrators, teachers and family members. I'm sorry, family, community, uh, members. Uh, we have our district English language learner committee meets monthly as well. Once a quarter, we meet with our families of students that have disabilities to, not only provide them the same information, but then maybe tailor it to what they're may do. We, we meet monthly with our administrative team and it is, um, an ongoing conversation about our goals and our LCAP goals and processes. Board of trustees will bring this information to you monthly. We work closely with our SLPA director and, um, she was provided our LCAP to give us some information. Both union groups provided feedback, student groups. I did get a chance to meet with, um, leadership at Avid at McHaffrey. And so, um, that was very interesting and a lot of the same things that they brought to the table, other community members do. And then definitely our parent and community staff with the email, uh, the web link. So, kind of putting all this together, um, for goal one. We made, um, the, uh, the only change we made to the goal was kind of condensing and, uh, the actual language of the goal. So, this is goal one around academics, engaging all learners with a focus on academic rigor, using inclusive practices in a variety of learning environments. We do have to identify which priority these, this goal addresses. As, uh, as you, as you remember, um, uh, we are funded through the local control funding formula, which requires us to address, uh, there's actually 10 priority areas, but for an elementary district or an LA, it's only eight. And we do have to identify which areas is this addressing. And, um, you know, why we developed this goal. And then our metrics, they start along with each 14. Majority of our metrics stay the same. We did make some adjustments to the benchmark based on data that we had reviewed. So, we looked at our DRA data, so reading data, math, math and math ELA data. Our dashboard, uh, data that is around math and ELA. English language learner progress, uh, use of, uh, common core aligned standards. And as I mentioned, because, you know, there, there are requirements, what we have to have in our metrics. So, some of these are really, um, kind of directed by CDP. Those are metrics are all the same. And then if we go to page 28, so these are our action items. So, what are the actions that we're going to put into place to meet the goals and metrics that we're identifying? We can continue to support our school readiness center, truly kind of giving those early learners a good start. In addition to having our parent education programs and our home visitation. We'll continue with the Avid program. I mean, I'm just kind of pulling out a few of these, the Avid program at the middle school. And, um, we launched it very successfully at, um, Lake Canyon this year. And, uh, students that were taught using those Avid strategies did show really solid growth on their math scores. Continuing to provide the instructional assistance support. Development, continuing to develop a dual language immersion program at Alley Oaks. Going on to first grade next year. And then, um, providing release time for our administrators and our staff to review data through those academic conferences and MTSS. Um, continuing the transportation, uh, services, uh, to be able to provide a, um, broader routes. And then, um, new that we're adding is our AGA program, uh, next year. And, um, because we were red for students with disabilities in one of those, uh, uh, in, in the dashboard, an action item really supporting, uh, supporting the schools that have red on their indicators around professional development to meet the needs of the students with disabilities. Kind of an action item. So, that's goal one. So, goal two is our social emotional learning goal and the goal stayed the same. And we've identified the, um, indicators that is supports. And our metrics here did stay the same. We're looking at average daily attendance. We're looking at quality absenteeism rate, middle school dropout rate, um, expulsion rates, suspension rates. And then, um, our, uh, student surveys and parent and staff surveys on the health and community school survey. Action items, um, continuing to support social workers or counselors on every school campus. We also very fortunate that we work with SCOE, Sacramento County Office of Education, to, um, provide a mental health condition at every school site. And we're excited to show that we'll be launching it at Fairsite as well as for earlier learners as well next year. Safety, having our, um, access to a school resource officer and then yard supervision during those unexpected times. And then, um, expanded learning and enrichment programs that cover STEAM, GATE, our environmental education, our, um, programs that are being promoted and developed. One of the outdoor education coordinator and our new meeting. And we did, um, put in some action items to address behavior and quality absenteeism. So, suspension rates were in the red. So, on page 41, um, this is, as Alejandra had mentioned, um, supplemental and concentration funds are allocated based on, uh, school districts, um, unduplicated populations. So, these are students that are identified as either English learners, foster youth or, uh, low socioeconomic. So, you get extra funding. And as a part of that extra funding, you have to identify the action items that you will contribute, that they will contribute to. So, what you will see on page 41, 43. And all the way to 47, some of those action items that I've spoken to or referenced in this previous section, some of this supplemental and concentration funding will be used to support those action items. And again, these are there to, um, close the achievement gap on our high needs learners. And then we start with the expenditure table. These are all like.
So, the 2420 times here, you can, you notice that, um, uh, we started putting, um, how much we're spending on each of the actions. We also indicated whether it's LCFP funds, federal funds or other funds to fund, um, those position. And whether they're in contributing to improve and, uh, improve or increase services, that contributing factor for this supplemental concentration. So, it adds, it's that, it adds up to our total budget for our LCAP. So, the next table, you'll notice contributing actions, how much are we spending of our LCAP to supplemental concentration. It just breaks it down more in thorough of which actions related to it. Um, the 2324 annual app update, it just shows, um, what our old, old LCAP had, what it had budgeted, how much we spent. In many of the areas, we spent more than anticipated. I like what you mentioned, because of salary increases and other services that were part of the goal that were originally in the, um, in the category for the budget. So, so far we're doing, we're doing well as a district spending according to our LCAP closing actions.
And then you have all the instruction, you have some complete. Definitely a team effort and everybody's eyes on the services that we provide is critical.
One of my questions you answered in here was, how do these manifest in throughout the district? But the, um, partners table was really helpful and sort of playing that.
Yeah, thank you. Good summary.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Colleen. Very good job.
And so tomorrow, this of course is an action item, but we wouldn't go over this again. And to alternate tonight that we go over it, of course, if you have questions tomorrow, we have public comment tomorrow. And it all will take that, but it would just be an action item tomorrow.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to, I mean. Agenda item. 232.509, public hearing and board review of the all joint union elementary school district 2425 budget.
We have a PowerPoint for this. And it is in your mind year as well, though.
So, at that time of year, we start building our LCAP, our adopted budget, sorry, uh, for 2425. Our fiscal team all collaborating, we're trying to get this budget down for this new fiscal year. So, to begin, the budget assumptions is based on, um, May, May revise and most of current information we have at that time. So, we did update some of the areas that we found out on the next slide. It's okay. So, some updates in May revise is our COLA. It originally was budgeted 0.73, went up to 1.0. It's okay. Um so some updates in May revises are COLA. It originally was budget of point seven three, went up to one point oh seven um during the May revise. The STIRS rate remained the same, but per sit increase of point three seven, so that's reflected in our updated budget. LCFF revenue increased in all three years to two colon based on being funded on current, current year eighty eight. So and enrollment increased from second interim um to the most current information in May, so about sixteen students we showed a reflection. So that reflects the increase in revenue in our multi-year projection. The unduplicated percentage also increased from sixty one point five eight to sixty three point two two, so that helps um. Um it's a UPP funding for the foster um pre-reviews um students. So we, we saw a bump in, a little bump on that revenue for the coming fiscal year. And for twenty four, twenty five, the learning loss recovery emergency block round will be fully expended. That is our remaining funds from S R and COVID funds. So once it's done, it's done. We're using it up this upcoming fiscal year. Um the multi-year projection includes reductions for the following fiscal year and the twenty six, twenty seven fiscal year to maintain that nine percent reserve. Um and we'll present that throughout times of reductions to the board of what that looks like. So our cost of living in the next slide. Um our projections, it includes, as I mentioned, that one point oh seven COLA. And for the twenty five, twenty six is a two point nine three percent and um for the third year out, it's a three point oh eight. And just, just to note, COLA is designated simply to account for the increases or inflated costs, is not to provide an increase on real spending capacity. So something to keep in mind. I also feel like this COLA will change just because we're in a deficit currently. This is very optimistic of what was provided. Tomorrow, school services provides uh on the eighth, yeah, tomorrow. Provides an update on the school finance on the final budget and I'll see some updates on what that looks like. So I guess I anticipated even by by second um January's, next year on January's, I mean um governor's budget, this twenty five, twenty six and twenty six, twenty seven square to be lower than what it, this is very optimistic and we're, they're deficit right now, so I don't see that happening. Um so unrestricted reserve levels on the next slide. So this is our combined, combined total with committed and assigned and assigned levels. This is similar to what we provided second interim based on value increase. We anticipated um our reserves going down um based on the update uh current increase we gave in this fiscal year. So our, our twenty four, twenty five productive reserve is about eleven point eight two. We see it going um down twenty five, twenty six and then about twenty six, twenty seven became to, um because of reductions. That's the reason twenty six, twenty seven has stabilized. So we're, we're, we're on the right track to maintain that nine percent as a district. Um as I included those reductions in that multi-year projection. On the next slide. So this is our district enrollment and funded ADA. So for twenty four, twenty five. We maintain um, we're budgeting. All right, we're reconservative on our, on our enrollment. It's, we're, we're projecting three thousand four hundred and forty three to maintain that stabilization. We may see increases, but we'll provide that during first interim. Um and then our funded ADA, as you noticed, is starting to beginning to stabilize now. So during COVID, um as we're recovering, we're going to hit that um cliff and see a reduction, but we did increase our ADA this year. So we didn't fill that cliff as much because we saw um there was an increase in enrollment and more students attending school. So you start noticing that for um for next year and moving forward, our ADA stabilizing, we're being funded on our actual students, not baseline and average anymore. So that, that's a good reflection of how the district's going. So the district LCFF funding, um this is a pretty picture of the LCAP in a graph kind of form. So this is how the district is being funded through LCFF funding, the home-to-school transportation. We get about five hundred and ninety two thousand. Keep in mind, transportation home-to-school costs about one point six million. It's just a portion of it. Um it's still helpful. We do appreciate that. Uh supplemental concentration for those high um needs and and our high need students, we, they provide an additional six point one million for English learners, low income and foster youth. And then there's some great span adjustment. It's, this is just something that was grandfathered over the years. They don't give this anymore. It's about one point four million dollars. And in our base grant is a thirty two million dollars. All of that adds up to the forty million dollar that was presented in the LCAP. It's just a nice breakdown. And in order to receive that additional supplemental concentration, um the UPP level must be fifty five percent to, for the concentration portion. A projected revenue. So overall, our projected revenue for upcoming fiscal year is about fifty four million dollars. Of that forty million is LCFF funded, as you saw in the, in the parent overview. We do have some federal funding, other states and other locals, a small percentage. The federal funding includes that one-time um uh law, learning loss grants, what we're spending in twenty four, twenty five. We won't have that next, the year after that. So there's a reduction in the second year out. And that new grant we're receiving is CYBHI. It's included in here, so it's a reflection of the updated information. The volume slide is our expenditures. So our, um as we showed in the uh parent overview, where our total expenditures is sixty million dollars. Um of that seventy eight percent of our salaries and benefits is for employees and the remainder are for services and supplies. And this includes now our math adoption and one-time learning wanted funds in the expenditures.
And we might clarify, so total salaries and benefits is not sixty million. That's our total. That's our total expenditure.
Thank you, yeah. Um so what are the next steps for um for elementary? So tomorrow, July eighteenth, our school finance conference will be provided via Zoom and um this is going to be after the governor has approved it. Because they approve it in fifteen, they provide it, may revise. They see small changes, but it's not as, as drastic. If there is large um changes, there is a chance to do a forty five day, may um forty five day re-revision. And we would provide that to the board with just an update of what that looks like. I'll know more information tomorrow. Um so right now, it's time to just start closing our books for twenty through twenty four, from July to August, and then we'll bring our audited actuals in September together. And then after that, um we'll start working on our audit during that time, about the same time. And then we can bring up any uh updates for our first interim in December. Any questions on this object?
There's a lot of discussion on the problem I hate funding.
What are you trying to do? Yeah, on the following slide, on the following document, the pocketbook um in our binder, we start, um which is reflected in our narrative and I'll go over it in a little bit. Um but you could see that, that in what was thirty seven point nine billion budget deficit in January is now twenty seven point six um billion at the May revise factoring all early um action measures, which there was a shortfall, about seventeen point three um billion dollars. So um this can change. They need to plan out for, they're giving us this COLA. But how are they really truly funding? They have the point seven three or points, yeah, point seven three. But he still hasn't figured out how he's going to give us that difference between the point seven three and the one point oh seven. He's like, we're going to give it to you with one-time money. But let me figure out how I'm going to do that. So he's working on that with legislature and Department of Finance. Um so programs that remain unchanged is our expanded learning program, which is our GEL program. The universal transitional kindergarten program. Um there is a positive on the green buses. He did uh allocate a certain amount and we got grant award for rear, three buses. So you'll see those come, coming in soon for the district. The school dark board, this is what we use to help us build our budget. Um as I mentioned, the COLA is up, up there, just the, the, the rate that we need to keep in mind is our CalPERS rate in the uh other planning factors in the bottom. Um CalPERS continues to increase and that's very costly for the district. Yeah, CalSTR remains um state stagnant, but CalPERS is very expensive and we have to pay a contribution on the district side as well, not just the employee.
Looks like maybe a couple of these agents didn't get in your binder. You didn't get the pocket budget and yes, I'll give you mine. How about we take it out? I want this for reference. Okay, well, it's okay, as long as it's in the regular binder, so you might, you might want this. And we didn't print, you'll want to leave this binder here tonight because we didn't print, double print the LCAP and the budget again because your binder already was big. So you might want to, might need to reference this again tomorrow if you have some questions or anything, but yeah, so that's why it's playing.
Okay, and do you guys have the economic outlook one?
Or I think, I think so, yes.
Okay, okay, so I can reference that one. That has more of a narrative of what happened in the May revise. Um showing that the governor, Newson, wants to do maneuver, funding maneuver to be able to implement the one-time educa, without affecting education cuts. Um it, it, as we noticed, that he's trying to withdraw additional money, money from the rainy day fund. What that means is um currently, um a few years ago, it started that there's a cap in the reserve levels of ten percent. Um when he starts withdrawing all his rainy day fund, which he's going to take it all out and meaning we won't have any more rainy day fund. And are that reserve cap will no longer be um, uh it will be voided. So meaning you, the district's able to go over because now that the state doesn't have any backup plan, so they're basically leaving the district. So I can figure it out how to, you're going to plan because we don't have backup money anymore. So that's just something to keep in mind. I hope tomorrow we'll, we'll see what's, I hope it not as bad, but we'll prepare our district and we'll be ready for what comes to, um what comes for men. Other updates, since I went over the COLA. We went over and let's just end the budget after that.
It's, it's good that we have the reserve we have. I mean, yes, it's definitely lower than what we started, you know, in the year because we did give compensation. Um but at least we, we have above nine percent. So if things don't turn out the way they're planned right now, or if that COLA really drops the next few years out, we have a little bit of a question. Man crossing our fingers that if, being moment trends continue to go up for us, because that is definitely, that's your number one source of revenue.
That helped uh, we would have seen a drastic hit in our revenue if it wasn't for our ADA to, our enrollment increase and which affects our average daily attendance increase, help the next year to be stable. And instead of feeling that big drop of revenue, so we, we're seeing the growth, so we're in a good place because of that growth.
Yeah, we're starting to, we had to open up another TK class. We'll have six on EKs next year. We have five this year, so um starting to go in the right direction. It's slow growth, but we'll, we'll take any growth. That's great. Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of strategies being used seem to be more like kicking the can down the road.
Yeah, so it will be interesting to see what happens. It's gonna affect long, a long-term um financial decisions, it's gonna affect district in the long term. They're basically giving us money that they don't have. So eventually you could just cut basically in the future, which we don't want to do that to staff. We don't want to do that, yeah. Any question?
Thank you. Very helpful. So we would do the same thing with the budget tomorrow, just action. Wouldn't go in detail, of course, answer any questions if we have to be feedback from the public tomorrow night. Do we have any public comments? Any, any pending items? Feel free to leave your, your binder where you're at unless you would like to.